Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the November 11th, 2014 Veterans Day, Richland School District Two Board of Trustees Meeting. Thank you very much for your presence on tonight. We've just come from Executive Session, and we're now going into our Public Session. At this time, we will stand and have an inspirational moment by our Vice Chairman, Mr. James Manning, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
As I thought through the inspirational moment today, I came across a saying from Dr. Seuss, which I think is fitting both for Veterans Day and for some of us who've been re-elected and new board members and actually teachers and our staff in the schools as well. Sometimes you will never know the value of a moment until it becomes a memory. And I think we've all been in the middle of situations and not realize the impact that it's had on our lives and the value it brings until we reflect back on that at another time. So I think we're at that moment in time in our district now with the change in the Board and certainly the work that you do and again appreciate our veterans who look back and realize that the reason we're here and have the opportunities that we have is because of the work that they do. So let's all keep that in our memories and think about those moments.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we see it? At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the current agenda.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Manning.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Next on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Brill.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Plank. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our faculty focus. Dr. Hamm.
I'm happy to ask Nancy Gregory to introduce the focus of our faculty segment. We'll be talking about our reading coaches, which we're fortunate to receive funding.
Right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Read to Succeed was signed into law by Governor Haley on June 11th, 2014. This legislation directed districts to hire reading coaches for designated elementary schools for the 2014-15 school year. The purpose of the coaches was to provide job-embedded, stable resources for professional development throughout schools in order to generate improvement in reading and literacy instruction and student achievement. Tonight, two of our reading coaches, Kathryn Griggs and Tammy Gilchrist, will share experiences from their new roles.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
How are you this evening?
Fine, how are you?
My name is Tammy Gilchrist, and I'm a district reading coach for Catawba Trails and North Springs Elementary School. With me tonight, as Ms. Gregory said, we also have some of our other district reading coaches. Let me start by saying we appreciate the opportunity to come before you and share our roles as reading coaches. I know you may wonder, as reading coaches, what do you do? As reading coaches, we go into the classrooms and we help teachers implement research-based instructional strategies because, as we know, having effective literacy instructors in the classroom has a direct impact on student achievement. We also help teachers plan using their student data. We also get down and dirty. We get into the classroom right alongside the teacher. We co-teach. We model strategies. We don't stop at just modeling strategies. We go back into the classroom and observe teachers teaching those strategies. We don't stop there. We go back and confer with the teachers to provide feedback to those teachers on what we have observed when they implement those strategies. Our jobs don't stop there. We also extend to school-wide professional development and learning as well as we assist with planning for and providing professional development and professional learning.
Thank you. I'm Kathryn Griggs. I'm the reading coach at Windsor Elementary. And Tammy told you a little bit about how we're supporting the teachers in our building, but at the same time, we are receiving enormous support both at the state level and the district level. Monthly, as coaches, we attend state professional learning, which is directly related to the Read to Succeed requirements. At the district level, we have a fabulous support team. We work very closely with Nancy Gregory. We work with Dave Foster, Jeff Potts, Cory Aminas, and really the entire elementary teaching and learning team. Our two district literacy specialists, Alice Shaw and Becca Daz, will also meet with us monthly to provide really professional development tailored towards not just our needs here in Richland Two, but some of the initiatives that we have onboard. So some of the things that we've been discussing are the balanced literacy model for instruction in all K through five classrooms, continuing to look at implementation of our state standards, using formative assessment both with students, but also kind of our formative assessment with teachers to make sure that we're really tailoring what we're doing to their needs. And then also, because we're all so new at this coaching, there are fabulous resources for giving us sort of some coaching strategies so we can continue to build those important relationships with teachers as we move forward. All of this, they continue just to be where we are when we need them. So Becca and Alice come to our schools, they model professional learning for us, and they respond weekly to our reflective journals, which we submit to them just to kind of share what we're doing. All of this stuff helps us as coaches stay focused on kind of our one primary goal and responsibility, and that is that daily as reading coaches, we strive to improve reading and writing instruction in every classroom. And we believe that in doing that, that ultimately we will improve student achievement for all students here in Richland Two. So thank you so much for the opportunity to talk to you.
Any questions or comments from the Board before you leave, ladies?
Just a couple. One, are we clear, because I've heard that maybe there's not a lot of clarity coming from the state over exactly what the expectations and outcomes are supposed to be?
That has been primarily with the certification and endorsement and the coursework, and we are keeping on top of that, working with them on a regular basis. Actually, the implementation of that is not due till 2015-16, so they are taking time to regroup and slow down a little bit to get all of that together.
And then if a student doesn't, isn't on grade level right by the end of third grade, my understanding is they're held back? Is that correct?
Yes, that goes into effect 2017-2018.
So we have a little while before that goes into effect?
We do, and with the work of these coaches, we are making great strides. And we also started ahead of schedule a reading camp this summer, and we'll be continuing that for those students also for support.
And then I know that this probably doesn't happen often, but if you have maybe somebody who's not progressing, a teacher or somebody who's not progressing, what are some of the strategies that we use to help with that? How do we address that?
Well, that is why we have two coaches that are working with them. Alice Shaw and Becca Daz will are working very closely with them, and they meet with the coaches on a regular basis, and they are coaches for the coaches.
Okay.
They have the support at the state level, but we felt in collaboration with Dr. Hamm that it was very important that they work closely with Jeff Potts and working with data, using the data, and also with the coaches for instructional purposes and working with the teachers. So we're providing lots of support at our district level.
Last question. How many coaches do we have?
Harry, thirteen and a half, is that correct? Because we had to make that adjustment, and I look at Harry to make sure. In fact, that is a good segue, because most of them are here, and we would like them to stand tonight so that you can recognize or meet them or see them. And they have been fabulous. We've received lots of kudos from the schools. And again, Becca Daz will and Alice Shaw, if you'll please stand, they are their coaches and, like I said, work very, very closely. So we want to thank you for your support of this initiative. We know that it is making a difference in Richland Two.
Before you sit down, again, let's make sure we have no more further questions or comments from the Board.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dr. Johnson.
I have a question. I know some of the reading coaches are split between schools. Can you tell me how much time they spend at each school and with each teacher?
That is going to vary from site to site. And they have worked, Tammy is an example, so she can give you a sample.
I actually am split between two schools, and so we actually spend one week at one school, and we rotate and go to the next school the next week. As literacy coaches, I can clearly speak, I think, for all of us when I say, Richland Two has done a phenomenal job of making sure that we have the support base that we need. When we go to our district meetings, on the, well, excuse me, when we go to our state-level meetings, we find that we are always, just like Richland Two, one step ahead of the game.
And we made that decision in the best interest of the teachers and the schools so that they would be there one whole week instead of fragmenting the number of days. And we think that has worked well for us.
Right, but back to the question, how much times are you spending with the teachers? Are you meeting with them once a week during their planning time, or are you in a classroom two days a week?
We do. We meet with teachers during their planning time. We meet with teachers as a faculty level when we're providing school-wide professional development. Some teachers call us in outside of class time as well. We make it known for teachers that just because we aren't in that school that week, they can still communicate with us through email. We set up schedules so that we can have appointments after school if necessary. We feel that we are going to do whatever it takes to get the job done. So being split between the two schools doesn't slight any teacher at one particular location.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the Board? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I realize that we, as we approved the agenda, we inadvertently left the 10.3 land lease with the Richland Library on the agenda, when in fact, there was no news because of some timing on that issue with the Library Board. So I don't know somebody who's better at this than me. Do we need to take that off the agenda or just have it as no action?
Make a motion to table it.
Okay. Well, I make a motion, we table that item at this time.
This motion to table the agenda item 10.3, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Johnson, I think. Ms. Brill, seconded by Ms. Brill. Any further discussion? We'll do a hand vote. All those in favor of table that item, please indicate by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Manning. Next on our agenda is the public participation, but before we do that, let me just pause for a moment and say how excited I am to welcome our newly-elected Board members. I intended to do this at the very onset, and so I apologize to my colleagues. I'd like to ask you, in joining me in welcoming Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker, Ms. Amelia Mackey, Mr. Greg Plank, and returning our Vice Chair, Mr. James Manning, join me in welcoming our newly-elected Board members. Thank you very much. Now, on public participation, no one signed up to speak. However, does anyone in the audience who'd like to come and address the Board? You can do so at this time. All right, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is voting on the Executive Session items. The Chair will entertain a motion on the student appeals.
Mr. Chair, on student number one, recommend, refer to the IEP team at Blithwood Academy. Number two, Blithwood Academy. Number three, Blithwood Academy. Number four, back to home school on strict probation with 20 hours of community service. Number five, uphold the appeal, back to home school on strict probation. Number six, Anna Boyd and the IEP team. Number seven, Anna Boyd. Number eight, Blithwood Academy and Laredo. Number nine, Anna Boyd. Number 10, deny the appeal. Number 11, deny. Number 12, deny.
Motion been made by Mrs. Brill. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, under old business, no action requested, is an update on the Ridgeview facilities. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Each month, we give you an update on progresses being made in improving Ridgeview facilities Mr. Carter's available, and he'll be making that presentation.
Ladies and gentlemen, we started moving forward, as you know, at the last board meeting. You approved the $1.9 million overall budget essentially for four projects, the artificial turf on the main field, lighting on A field, auditorium and media center upgrades, and some renovation and removal of lockers. As you know, the bid came in for the artificial field. Ridgeview season is over, so we can get in there and start working. We're going to do some work up front ourselves because we want to retain some of the sod and some of the topsoil rather than have it hauled off. We got lots of places we can use that, and so we intend to cut that and reuse it ourselves. As soon as we are ready, we'll have Medallion come in and begin to work. And again, it is slated to be done by the end of February in time for spring season. I know that the principal has had contact with the homeowners association. I don't think they had a face-to-face meeting, but there has been some discussion. Let me just give you an overview of what the lighting would look like on whichever field it goes on. It's four 70-foot tall poles roughly on the 20-yard lines, two on each side. There are 18 fixtures on each pole, total of 72 fixtures. Each fixture is 1,500 watts, and the requirement is, and it's a high school league requirement, to have a minimum of 50-foot candles on the plague surface for competition fields. So that is the standard we used when we did Northeast Field. It gives us a little better than 50, which you wouldn't like to have because over time it does get a little dimmer. So that's what, whichever field it is, it goes on, that's what will be installed. The auditorium and media center, the purchase orders have been cut. The work has begun as far as design with both the electrical and mechanical engineers and the architect. Also, the furniture folks are working with the architect as far as furnishings in the media center. And last is, we're still working with Ridgeview to determine how many lockers they want to take out and where they want to take them out, and all on one side of the hall. There's been some discussion of taking out banks up and down the hall as opposed to taking them all off one side, and then they'll pick out a color and we'll repaint the lockers. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the Board?
Lighting you mentioned, is that contingent?
That's okay.
The lighting, is that contingent upon the homeowners association's response?
Some field's going to get lighted. The school's preference is the lacrosse band field. That's why we're meeting with the homeowners association because there is, when you have that kind of lighting, there will be some bleed over into the neighborhood, and we just want to make sure that they're comfortable that that's going to, that they're not going to be real mad with us. I wouldn't say it's contingent on that. We don't need their permission. We just don't want to do it without at least talking to them first.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning.
On that same topic, though, my concern is that the field that we're asking to light is the only one that is full-size, correct, for?
It's a full-size, it's a full-size lacrosse and football field. The band uses it in the fall.
But the other field is not full-size, so it would limit some of the activities.
The lower field, it's also full-size, it's just when we put in the road, which is a requirement for the improvements we made down on baseball and softball, the edge of the field gets closer to the road than the school would like. So they would rather go to a different field.
So they're both?
You can both get 100-yard football field on both those.
Okay.
And soccer field is a little different size than the football.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Brill.
I think we've had this conversation before about lights going off by about 9:00. Is that correct? And then shielding the lights so the lights?
We can shield the lights on the side of the houses that are shining away from the houses, but you can't shield the lights that are shining towards the houses because they have to shine down at the field. There's no way to shield those. They're pointed down, but there's just some natural bleed over. If you go to any stadium, there's lights beyond the edge of the lighting.
Because I believe I remember the discussion with that neighborhood.
Right. We had that discussion.
They wanted their privacy respected.
Other questions or comments from the Board? Jack, I thought the field that would be lighted had been decided. I didn't think it was even up for debate. I thought the only thing that was being discussed was just trying to make sure that we made the homeowners association comfortable, but not that there was an issue about which field would be lighted. So am I missing something or?
No, sir. I mean, we're planning on lighting that field.
Okay.
I just hadn't released the bid. I don't want a bid to go in the newspaper saying we're going to light that field that we've had that conversation.
I understand.
I don't want to get them stirred up.
I just didn't want to make the impression that there was some vasculation going on now about the two fields when I thought that had been resolved. Okay, thank you very much. Other questions or comments on the Board? Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, under new business, no action requested, is a reporter on the Discipline Task Force. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, we've had a group that's been getting together now for the second time to talk about how we can reduce suspensions, expulsions, and general discipline issues. And we've got Cleveland Smith and Roosevelt Garrett who will be telling you about the work of that committee. This is one of the nine areas that we outlined for the Board that we're working on this year, and I want to emphasize that we'll be bringing periodic progress reports to the Board. This isn't a final report. We just want to let you know the progress that's been made.
Ms. Garrett.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Cleveland Smith and I were tasked with co-chairing the Discipline Task Force. As you know, a hot-button item nationally, regionally, statewide, and also locally, is student discipline. As Dr. Hamm mentioned, one of the nine priorities of the district this year is student discipline. So we were bringing together a task force to tackle this particular item. Members of this Discipline Task Force were either recommended or volunteered. Nobody was forced to become a member. We were going to give this report on the night that the board meeting was canceled. At that time, there were 48 members. Since that time, we've increased five. It's now 53 members of that Discipline Task Force. The 53 members of the task force include parents, community members, faith-based community, law enforcement community, legal community, district personnel from school and the district level. And the purpose of that task force was to engage the members in open dialogue regarding student discipline, procedures, and consequences across the district. That's the purpose. And one of the things we asked everyone, all 53 members, leave your titles at the door. This is open dialogue. We want to put everything on the table. We want to do what's in the best interest of our 27,000-plus students, and that's our goal. Mr. Smith is now going to come and give you some specifics on some of the things that we've discussed thus far in our two meetings.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We had our first meeting back on August the 25th, and we had it at Conference Center. And we began our meeting at 9:00 a.m. and went to 12:00 p.m., and it was a very productive meeting. At that meeting, there were 41 participants at that meeting. Some of the topics that we talked about, we talked about the top behaviors that led to suspensions, and some of those were disrespect, inappropriate behavior. We also, the task force also reviewed district policies in regards to suspensions, expulsions, as well as the task force reviewed our zero tolerance and our code of conduct. Some of the general feedback from accomplished staff that we had at our first meeting were we talked about having an engaged community to ensure that our suspension and expulsion rate continued to decline. We also talked about interventions and having interventions in place to prevent suspensions in the first place as well as expulsions. As Mr. Garrett said, we had originally planned this meeting for the 14th, but as you can see, that's our next meeting will be on Friday, November 7th. We did have that meeting. We had it at Conference Center again. And during that meeting, we reviewed articles. We reviewed four articles. One was the school to prison pipeline. We talked about the Dear Colleague letter from the U.S. Department of Education as well as Civil Rights Department, and we looked at guiding principles as a resource for improving school climate and discipline. As Mr. Garrett said, there are 53 members of the task force, and with a task force that large, what we also did at that meeting, we broke out into eight subcommittees. And those subcommittees will be meeting, begin meeting, matter of fact, the first one meets this week, and they're going to meet between now and the 1st of December, and then the whole group is going to come back for our next meeting to report out on what each committee is doing in February, on February 6th at our next meeting. Any questions?
Questions or comments on the Board?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Dr. Johnson.
The first one is, what is the plan to engage some of the players in the community with these students, with the different community leaders that you listed earlier? So what is the plan? How we're going to engage those members?
Well, as Mr. Smith stated, we have broken down, broken our members down into eight subcommittees, and they have different topics that they're going to discuss. And as you can imagine, having 53 people in one group, having the entire group together, that's going to be pretty tough. So that's why we broke them down into the subcommittees. They're going to report back next time, and then we'll have general dialogue on their reporting. What we plan to do is come up with a plan from suggestions of the stakeholders, and after we review all the plans that are presented to us, the plan is to send it to the executive staff first. The executive staff will review it, and then we will have recommendations coming to the Board. Because based on the feedback from our subcommittees and our committee as a whole, we may have to look at procedures, we may have to even look at board policy. So there are a number of things that we expect to come out of our discussions, but we haven't gotten down into those specifics yet.
And one other question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Earlier, Mr. Garrett, you stated that you have a variety of folks on this task force, which is great, but one thing you stated that you asked them to leave their titles at the door. So why are we engaging all of these different people with different titles? That's going to bring a lot to the task force, but we're asking them to leave it at the door.
And what I meant by that, Dr. Elkins-Johnson, is that we want open dialogue. Just because the solicitor is in the room, we don't want anybody to feel threatened by that.
Okay.
We want you to express your feelings just because? Just because we are district personnel, don't be threatened by that.
Okay.
Express your feelings freely so that we can have open dialogue and come out with the best practices for our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on the board? Ms. Manning?
Just a quick comment. I really appreciate this work. I think this is critical. I think it's very timely, as you said, on a national, state, and local level. You know, talk of discussions about zero tolerance and how we handle discipline, what happens after the discipline happens. And so I think that this holistic approach with all the folks, and I saw the list of who's on there, I think it's impressive. And is a list that we, as a community, can all rely on the outcome and know that it's been vetted by experts from many different folks, including parents and others. So I, just again, thank you all for this work. I think it is timely and good. Glad to be here.
Other questions, comments on the board?
Just one more.
Yes, Dr. Johnson.
I do apologize. I was looking at the next meeting date, and it's Friday, November seventh, from nine to twelve. Now, that, that composed a conflict with people's work schedule? Has that been a problem with folks being able to be a part of this?
Well, we, at the first meeting, we posed to the group.
Okay.
What were, what were your desires? And the group desires were to meet at that time on November the seventh. Again, at the, at this meeting, we also, and put out again, what is the group consensus about time to meet? And we, matter of fact, some members even talked about, well, you know, we could meet in the evenings, we could meet in the morning. But again, when it came time for that meeting, they also picked the time at that time. So that was pretty much a group consensus about the time to meet.
So there was no work conflict with the fifty-three being able to leave their jobs?
Well, some people came, and, and one thing about our meetings, you know, if you have to leave, you know, you, you can, you know, you, we also have, is, is, you know, when we're doing our activities, you are free to move around as you feel appropriate. And, you know, some people did have to leave before we even picked some of our subcommittees. But to be honest, the majority of people did not, and that was the time that they chose.
Other questions? Thank you. Other questions or comments on the board? I would hope that, I'm assuming that's happened, so I don't want to insult you by answering the question, I guess, but that there's going to be some comparative data that's going to be pulled on this very topic of schools that are comparable size to addition to, that we will look at as well. Because I'm very interested in what we do and how we're doing it. At the same time, I'm interested in seeing how far off we may be compared to other school districts of our size and our makeup and our demographics. So I'm assuming that's going to happen.
We're, we're looking at every bit of data that we can come up with. As stated earlier, we had articles about this topic that make suggestions about the different priorities that are taking place around the country, regionally, locally. So yes, we, we're going to take a look at all of that.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments on the board? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the report on the Innovation Incubator, Dr. Hamm?
Mr. Cranmer and Ms. Toybor are here to report on the, kind of give you an update on the Innovation Incubator. We've actually started a new cohort into that process, but I think what they want to bring you up to date on was what some of the final outcomes were from the last group. We're really proud of the work of the incubator, and I think it really points to the fact that we're trying to find ways that we can always improve what we do.
And thank you, Dr. Hamm, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are pleased tonight to bring you an update, informational update on the, on the Innovation Incubator. We call R2 Innovates. And just for the benefit of others that may not be as familiar with it, as background, you know, in so many ways, we as a district have been working sort of innovatively through the integration of technology for nearly twenty years. And, and like one definition of innovation, we were making changes to something established by introducing something new. So that was part of our innovation process. The district has worked innovatively in professional development. I think of programs like T42, New to Two, Professional Development, Specialized Summer Camps, that I've used innovative ways for training teachers and others. And several years ago, we got involved in a research development effort called the IPAC Project, whose aim was to work innovatively for creating personalized, authentic, and collaborative learning experiences for, for students. And that project really set the stage now to formalize our efforts in innovation and to create the Innovation Incubator. And some of those aims were and are to formalize, to formalize the innovation process, to foster design thinking with teams, teachers and teams of teachers, to encourage creativity, to seek out new ideas, and incubate the good ones, and accelerate the best ones, and really to be able to take chances to be able to fail and to be able to iterate from there and move forward. And as I pass this over to Mrs. Toybor to give you the details of it, there was a quote by Sir Ken Robinson that said, "If you're not prepared to be wrong, you'll never come up with anything new." So that's kind of just one thought that we have through that process, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Toybor.
Good evening, Chairman Jackson, members of the board, Dr. Hamm. It's great to be able to come to you a little more than a year later. We launched about a year ago in October, we came to you and taught you about our Innovation Incubator and how we were going to put that together. And so this is an update tonight of what our teams have done, and we've got a few team members here to share the work that they've done. So we began that in the spring of two thousand thirteen, the, to the process of bringing people together to talk about what innovation means and what would an incubator look like in Richland, too. We also talked to a lot of entrepreneurs, and we talked to venture capitalists, and we got on the phone, and we had hangouts, and we did a lot of research to find out, what does it really take to innovate, and how do you do that? And we talked with Tim Brady and his team at Imagine K-12, Silicon Valley startup for education, K-12 startup for ed tech companies, and a lot of the big companies have come out of that. And so they told us how they set their incubator up, and that was very helpful to have some advice from some of the startup companies that are out there now. And we talked to some of the teams, we actually still have some very good relationships with some of their teams. And we've also forged some relationships with the USC incubators. So those are some relationships we're continuing to work on and build on. So we found out that you've got to hold your ideas lightly. We, we had an application process, and we asked teams to come and pitch their ideas to us and talk to us about problems that they felt that were challenges that they had in their job. And this was open to anyone in the school district, any staff member. And so we had a lot of teams come, and they talked about things that they wanted to make better. And these are all very passionate individuals. We found out as we went along that teamwork was very important. They needed to have team members with them to help them brainstorm ideas. And so you're not, not just problem solvers, but problem finders, because sometimes you see a problem or a challenge, and what you think might be the answer is really not the answer. And it takes more research and observation and interviews to find out what the real challenge might be and how you might address that. And so it is about the students. We wanted all of these initiatives to impact student learning in some way. We want it to be about our four areas, learning, character, community, and joy. And we wanted to make sure that we were having an impact on students. So it's not just people doing things because it's fun and innovative. It's actually a lot of really hard work trying to solve some challenges that teachers and other staff members have thought about. And, you know, we all have ideas, and we sit and think about them a lot and think, what if I could do this? And so this was an opportunity to say, it doesn't have to come from the top, it can come from anyone in the district who has something that they think that they can bring to the table, and they want to work really hard to solve those problems. So it is about finding that passion, finding the things that people care about. The, the people who are in our incubator, the teams that we chose last January for our first cohort, were certainly people who work a lot. They work around the clock, and this is, this is not something that they do, you know, just, you know, when they feel like it. They do it, they, they, they do it in the evenings, they do it after school, they do it in the mornings before they go to work. And we've been able to provide substitutes for the teams that have been in, in our incubators. So in January of two thousand fourteen, we had our final pitches for our first teams, and we had nine teams who were ready, who had timelines and knew what they were going to do in the spring. And we asked them how they were going to collect data, quantitative data and qualitative data. They were asked to complete case studies of what they had done. And they were asked to take some of their first ideas, some of those sure, those bets, those small bets that they thought that they could implement, where they could, you know, get that data and see if that was going to have an impact on their project. So I'm going to tell you about a few of those projects, solving authentic problems. This is the Crowd Ed team, and you may have already seen them at the district breakfast. They, they spoke. And they, Jean Blackburn said, you know, teachers aren't getting funded through Donors Choose, and we have a lot of different kinds of needs. We need mentors, we need a lot of different kinds of things. And so let's come up with a platform. So they actually developed the Crowd Ed platform with the help of Travis Cotton and Charles Martin in our, in our departments, in the IT department. And they've got that, and they've launched it. And one thing I'd like to say, even though these teams are maybe, they've graduated, they're moving into the next phase, which is that they've, they have scaled their initiative. And Crowd Ed is an example of that. This, this incubator is a lot of building community. We want the teams to connect with each other and to connect with outside mentors. And so we have provided them with outside assistance. We've tried to make connections for them, and we are hoping to scale that for the incubator this year and involve more community members in working with our teams on expanding their, their innovative ideas. And we did find, too, that these teams like to get together and mix, mix together and talk. And some of our teams actually pulled together groups of teachers. We're going to have Tammy talk to you in a minute, but Tammy Linker and Cheryl Hunter and Amy Whitfield and Crystal, Crystal Smith decided that they wanted to implement a new professional development model for teachers. They wanted to come up with something that teachers would like, and they'll tell you about that. So they brought in a lot of teachers from two different schools, Ridgeview and Blythewood High, and mixed those teams to come up with some solutions. And they connected and combined a lot of ideas. Any innovation is really just coming up with a lot of different things that maybe have been done before and combining them and connecting things to have something that may be new and innovative for, especially for Richland, too. Some of these things may have been things done in other places, but not here in Richland, too. And creating that culture to scale, you know, that ten X thinking, that moonshot thinking. We want projects that can be scaled. This is an example of the blended learning team, math team from Longleaf Middle. And because of some of the work they've done with creating some blended learning models, we've got teachers at Ridgeview Blending and teachers at Spring Valley, and we have teachers in a number of elementary schools and middle schools who are calling them and asking for advice. How do, you know, how do we do this? How do we use technology in the best way possible in our classroom with having students engaged in face-to-face instruction as well as small group work, as well as some independent online learning? Rapid prototyping is another thing that our teams had to do in the spring, and our new teams will be, are doing now. It's, it's no time to sleep. You have to actually just have a timeline and go out there and do things. We do love to talk about things, but at some point, you have to say, we're just going to start trying some things, those small bets. And so rapid prototyping has been very important. Also, that idea of failing quickly, you know, we don't want to fail big time. We just want to try something, and if it doesn't, isn't work, we're going to make changes and iterate and make it better. And so the idea of always getting better. This is Will Anderson, and he and Jeff Potts will talk to you, Will's going to talk to you about their, their project, which was using data, and I'm not going to spoil that for Will. But we also connected with Ron Huff with our Internet Access Project, and he's a member of one of our teams now, our current teams. Being a hurdler is really important, and by that I mean, if you see a wall, well, you just try to figure out how to go over it. And teams have been really great, and they've gotten on the phone, and they've called different people. This is a particular team from Summit Parkway Middle School. They wanted to create a makerspace in the media center, and Jennifer Lanier got the engineering students, one-on-one, the introductory engineering students, to actually get on the phone and start making some calls about how they could make things happen in the media center. And they designed the space for her. So involving the students in doing that was really important. They learned skills of communication. Also, sharing with the community, this is our culinary one-on-one group. Rosemary Duck, who's the cafeteria manager at North Springs, had a show. She had done a few video shows about eating and cooking, and she wanted to go really big scale with that. But she wanted to impact the health of our students, and they actually decided that one way to do that would be to put recipes in the grocery stores so that parents, as they shop, can see the recipes and know what healthy foods they might purchase for their students. So they, they changed their focus a little bit from the students to the parents. And involving parents is another big aspect of the incubator. Most of these groups are involving parents in some way. This is the parent perch from Pontiac Elementary, and Katie Barber and her admin team wanted to create a, a parents' center so that parents could go and have access to resources at the school. And so they were able to make that happen this past year, and they've got parents who are using that space. Creating these movements. Some people were doing project-based learning, but at Sandlapper Elementary, the Schools Our Trashy Group decided that they could make money off recycling, and they could go really big, and they could convince everyone in the community to recycle everything. I mean, there were things they recycled I had no clue you could recycle, but they figured out how to take advantage of all of that. And they've created a project that can be scaled, and they've learned a lot that they can share, and they are sharing with other schools in the district. And then this idea of giving students ownership. The Google Geeks is a class at Kelly Mill Middle School, and these students are taking the Google Apps class, but they're also developing tutorials for teachers, and they're helping teachers as a help desk. And they collaborated with all of the high schools, with the high school students from, this is them working with someone from Blythewood High, learning how to be a support desk. So connecting students across, across grade levels, middle to high school. So a lot of different projects. You can see the Summit Parkway Media Center here in the midst of taking the furniture they had, and they created something completely different out of it. So when you go in there, the kids were making the furniture. So it's a great project. Our new teams this year are currently in the phase, they've been to some training to talk about their ideas and brainstorm and really immerse themselves in their, their challenges and to think about small bets that they can take right now. And right now, they're in the middle of trying some things, and they'll have final pitches in December and then bring us a timeline of what they want to do in the spring. So it's a, it's exciting to be part of this, and I'd like to, at this point, have Will Anderson, our Director of Planning, and Tammy Linker, the Technology and Learning Coach at Blythewood High, come up and talk to you for just a minute about what they did.
Just to give you a little background, I'm a District Two product. I came first through twelfth grade. Ms. Chisholm was my assistant principal, and Dr. Mallett was my eleventh grade English teacher. And I have two children who graduated from District Two schools and two on the way, hopefully on the way out. And so I have a very vested interest in, in our district, and I, I want it to be as wonderful as it always has been. And so, so my idea for innovation is to change up the way we do professional development because I think that's the key. America lags in quality and quantity of professional development. And, and what I was seeing with our, our Tech Tuesdays is that, you know, I wasn't seeing a lot of, of growth. And I think the, the quote, "When I die," I hope it's during an in-service because the transition to death would be so subtle. And so what we, what we wanted to do is just change things up. So we brought together the, the Technology and Learning Coach from Ridgeview High School, Cheryl Hunter, the Media Specialist, Amy Whitfield, and Crystal Smith from Blythewood High School. And we, we were the ones wearing hard hats, and, and we were going to wreck, wreck that PD. And so, so what we did is we got together some teachers, and we talked to them about what they wanted, and we looked at the research, and we brought in our district curriculum specialists, and, and really made, I think, a really good plan. And we're seeing the fruits of this now. We've had things like speed dating where the teachers are the experts, and they're, you know, teachers, groups of teachers are going from teacher to teacher and, and learning about what real teachers are doing in their classroom and what, what's working. We had an open mic just two weeks ago where teachers got up and shared what was going on in their classrooms, and then the teachers could separate and go to the classrooms and hear firsthand and, and get some on, some hands-on experience and develop something they could use the next day. And another thing that we're doing is, we have tea times, that's teacher enrichment and engagement. And this are small groups of three or four teachers that meet, and they talk about, these are my goals, this is what I want to accomplish, how can I do this? And, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing wonderful things. Instead of just pockets of, of some. Instead of just pockets of some really good teachers here and there doing some, some innovative things, it's, it's becoming contagious. And, and I can tell you, I had the six groups come through today, and almost every single one of those teachers had met their goals or exceeded them, and they're super excited. I'd love for you to come and see what's going on, but, and I'm really, I want to thank you for supporting this because it's been a wonderful, wonderful program.
Thank you. I don't have any funny quotes to tell you guys. Jeff and I are dug into data most of the time. We're, that we're kind of stuck with that. But Jeff Potts and I, I do a lot of data, and a lot of things that we do in planning revolves around, we use GIS software, geographic information systems, do our attendance lines and enrollment projections, and Jeff does a lot with data, achievement data, and different types of data, as you guys are well aware. And for several years, Jeff and I always thought, we never asked the question, where? Like, where to think the space matter in terms of our kids and really where? So we, we debated, how do we do this? And with the help with your old support and the administration's support with the Innovation Incubator, we finally found an avenue to turn our idea into a reality. So when we first came to the Innovation Incubator, we had this bright idea that we could just turn this, basically make a Realtor.com or some type of application that you could find, anything and everything you wanted to about our students in a, in a spatial location. That got shot down pretty quickly because that was not scalable. And that's something Innovation Incubator taught us was to be, is to scale down and to be scalability about we wanted, what we wanted to do and what we wanted to accomplish. And so what we did is we kind of started with some, a few customers. We just said, let's just go with one customer at a time, and for two reasons, to kind of scale it down and also to see if there was a real need. The, the people we worked with and the other groups really pushed us, is there really a need for this? Do people really want to know, does where matter in terms of our students and our achievement data and different types of data? So we first started with the three customers, our examples I'll give is we worked with Donna, and I think that was brought up last board meeting, actually, about Internet Access and the Kichet hotspots. And I was going to show a map of that, but some technical difficulties didn't work out to just give you all an example here at the last minute, but we were able to assist in, with Donna's team and help supply of good locations for the Kichet hotspots. And, and moving forward, we've got a really good data to, to help forward and helping our students get the, the access where they need. And it's pretty eye-opening to see where the, there's no Internet Access and how we can help those students. A second group we worked with was with, let me look at my notes here. We worked with Abby Cobb and the social workers, and Abby had spreadsheets and, and spreadsheets of the homeless students, and she was working with McKinney-Vento Act. And, and we were simply able to grab some data and put some things together to show her where those homeless students were and if there are alternate routes instead of us paying for taxi cabs to go and pick these students up. And the, the last example I'll give is we worked with CFK, the Magnet School, and they have an issue, two of their issues that they arise is since they're a school that serves all of our students, that they don't have an actual, all, they come from everywhere. They wanted to have a family night, so we were able to assist them with a family night. The only thing they want to do is help their parents with carpooling, since they don't live in a zone school, can they carpool? And we were able to, to solve some families' issues with carpooling. As we move forward, we're, we're still helping a lot of other people. We're, we're still at a very customer base right now, just on what our principals need. We want to, we still have that pie in the sky idea, and there's a lot of free software out there, there that we've found through Google and through some other software we have that's turning, really helping turn this big idea into, we think, a reality. So once again, thank you for their support and allowing us to, to do this. This has been an adventure, and we're, we're continuing to push forward, and thank you all very much.
We'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Brill?
So what happened to professional development? You're still doing it?
We are. That was a great report.
Other questions or comments from the board?
No, I'd just like to say, great, great report. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely, Tom. Thank you, guys, because I remember 18 months ago, so when you presented the idea, and you just, it was just in a concept, just a concept. And now to hear the tremendous work that's being done from a lot of selfless people really is impressive because the students and others and your colleagues benefit from your willingness to share your knowledge and explore something that maybe most people wouldn't have time to explore simply because of their job requirements. So thank you so much for that. It's exciting. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the calendar for school year 2015-2016. Dr. Ham?
Libby Ruth will be leading the discussion. We want to present the calendar at this meeting. It's for information. We'll ask you for action on it at the next meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Ham. Mr. Chair and Board Members, I was simply the facilitator in this process. My communications office worked with several groups, but the main group that heads up our calendar process and is what I refer to as the owners of this process is our faculty, the Superintendent's Faculty Advisory Council. And I have three volunteers from that council who are going to come up and share with you the process of how we got to where we are tonight. But first, I'll just say that when I came in, this was my first time ever working on a calendar, and I sat down with Nancy Gregory and talked about the fact that the most important thing we feel that should drive the calendar is teaching and learning. So when we started talking with the Faculty Advisory Council and the many other groups, we said, that's what we wanted everybody to keep at the forefront, that we want to develop a calendar, and we were looking at different scenarios, and we wanted the scenarios that go to the employees were there to, to give the choice to them, that all of them would be instructionally sound because at the end of the day, that's really the most important thing. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our first volunteer and then let them introduce themselves.
My name is Felicia Robinson, and I am a member of the Faculty Advisory Council and a special education teacher at Westwood High School. In order to provide you with a proposed calendar, several groups representing the district and community were consulted between September and October. During these meetings, specific information was shared in order to assist the groups in developing the best possible scenarios to present to employees. Each group was responsible for certain aspects of this process. Throughout the process, the groups focused on four important considerations that were shared by the Faculty Advisory Team, the Parent Advisory Council, and student leaders. The idea to avoid starting school on Monday was due to the need to slowly transition students back to school. Additionally, many middle schools and high schools sponsoring Step Up to Six and Fresh Start programs needed that time prior to the beginning of the first day of school. Scheduling school to start on a Monday would push such programs back to the week before. The need for the last day of the first semester to be followed by a holiday or a teacher workday was important to allow high school counselors and teachers to make transitions to the new semester, which may include schedule changes for some students and also teacher prep time for them as they prepared for the new semester of new courses and/or students. The next portion of our presentation will be provided with more specifics in the developing of our calendar.
Good evening. My name is Kate Nelson. I'm a first-grade teacher at Pontiac Elementary School and a member of the Faculty Advisory Committee. And what I'd like to show you, whoops, I went the wrong way, I'm sorry. Some of the known factors when developing the calendar, and I'd like to draw your attention to three particular points. The first one is the August 17th as the earliest start date for students. And this is kind of a little known fact by a lot of our faculty and staff is that schools, it's a state law, the schools cannot start before the third Monday of, of August. And so for the 15, 16 school year, August 17th would be the earliest start date for that school year. And the second one is the other state law regarding inclement weather days that need to be built into the calendar. We need to build three of them into the calendar. And the last thing I'd like to draw your attention to are the teacher workdays. And the state law is that we need 10 total required teacher workdays, professional development days. And I can tell you from a teacher's standpoint, the teacher workdays are welcome. It gives us a chance to prepare for the next quarter and allows us a chance to prepare and plan and complete report cards. Our next slide, we looked at the 2014, 2015 calendars, the comparison between the Richland School Districts, Lexington School Districts, and Kershaw Counties. And, and as you can see, several aspects of those calendars were lining up. And finally, these were the published calendars that were published prior to us creating our calendar, and we were able to use these to base a lot of our decisions on when certain dates should fall, such as our spring break and the first day of school. And as of now, we are currently lining up with Lexington One and Lexington, Richland Five, and Kershaw County as far as when our spring break falls. And that's very helpful to a lot of our faculty and staff who may teach in the Richland Two School District but reside in one of the other school districts and have children who attend schools there. It's nice to have those align so that they can, they can have the time off with their families, and they're not worried about childcare and taking care of their families as well. The next part, I'm going to have our next presenter come up and discuss the, the voting on the calendars and the two scenarios.
My name is Shayna Barber, and I teach at E.L. Wright Middle School, 7th grade math. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about how we decided, or the results of our calendar vote. In previous years, we've done a weighted vote where FAC members went back to their schools, presented the calendars, and then individual members of the schools voted, but the overall school vote had to be the same. So for example, E.L. Wright would get one vote on the R1 decision, and it was weighted, high schools weighing a little bit more than middle schools, and I believe middle schools weighing more than elementary schools based on school population. Yes. So this year, at the Faculty Advisory Council meeting, someone brought up the fact that we would really appreciate being able to have more of a one-person, one-vote model because, as is often the case, when you get large groups of people together, they don't all agree. So, you know, I might not like the same calendar that my neighbor likes, and I think my vote should count equally as theirs. So that is what we did this year. I think with good results. Every, the calendar was sent out on October 21st via email to all employees, and they had one week to vote via online survey, and these were the results. Okay, well, first of all, we have over 2,000 employees, about 55% of them chose to vote, so that was, the 2,000 voted out of 3,600 total employees. And here are the results. Total, roughly 64% voted for Scenario One, roughly 24% voted for Scenario Two, and roughly 11% had no real preference. We broke that down into kind of subcategories to see who was voting how. And so this first one is by role. We looked at how did administrators tend to vote, how did the certified staff vote, and how did classified staff vote. Overall, we all seem to agree that we like Scenario One. Very few people had no preference, roughly 23, 25% liked Scenario Two, but we all seem to agree, which is kind of strange, but good. We also looked at it by level to see, you know, did one, does an elementary school favor one calendar model while a high school favors another? Again, in this scenario, we all seem to kind of agree. There are a few discrepancies, you know, the elementary schools seem to really, really like Scenario One. They're almost at 70%, while the middle high and district office were at roughly 60%, but still a, a good margin to choose Scenario One. Not too much conflict there. Okay, that's it for.
And just to finish up, I'll give you just a highlight of, teachers will return August 12th in this scenario, and Scenario One that was voted on by the employees, students return August 19th. This calendar matches up very much to the calendar we have this year with a two-day break in October, and that actually falls at the end of the first quarter, which would be helpful for the report card grading. We kept our traditional three-day Thanksgiving break, two weeks in December. The end of the semester break would fall on January 15th. We did push inclement weather days back for next year. We really would like to wait to have inclement weather days not scheduled until March, but every day, extra day you add to take off adds an extra day to the end of the calendar. So trying to keep the calendar to end on 180 days in that first week of June, so you don't push down to the second week of June, you have to balance. So we do have one inclement weather day in February, one in March, one in April. And spring break is lining up with the other districts right now, and I feel confident that it will probably line up with all the districts in the Midlands area because the typical week that you have spring break, you usually can have it before or after the Easter holiday is the tradition. With Easter being earlier, all school districts want to push spring break as late as possible. One of the other common feedbacks we got was try not to have a long break between, a long period of time between spring break and the end of school without a holiday. Parent Advisory Council and Teacher Advisory Council said they can feel the, the wheels are grinding a little bit if you go lots of days, and that's what we used our inclement weather days for, is to build in some of those breaks. So pushing that, that spring break back, I think that is really the, probably the optimum week most districts would choose. Our last day for students would be June 3rd, and our last day for teachers would be June 4th. You have in your presentation that you can review later is how, right now, we stack up to the two published calendars. Lexington One, Lexington, Richland Five have published theirs. Kershaw is in the process of voting like we are. Richland One is in the process of developing this. They have our drafts, so they are, we are all trying to collaborate and work together. And just to kind of give you a little, if you get questions from employees, I wanted you to have a couple of points to remember. One thing that you'll see is that there is no, a common comment was there's no difference between the two scenarios, and that is very accurate. There's about two or three days. That speaks to a couple of different things. We are very tied in when you have the start date mandated by state law, and then when you want to have that 90th day fall at an optimum time to have a holiday off, that really constricts the amount of time that you have for flexibility. So the Faculty Advisory Council, while the employees voted on two scenarios, they spent two or three meetings reviewing different scenarios. They removed, their last meeting, they spent an hour reviewing three scenarios. The third scenario was very different, but what it did was it let that 90th day fall in the middle of the week, and then you had a holiday, a random holiday on a Wednesday for no other reason than for the end of the break. In talking with Parent Advisory Council members, one thing they like for us to avoid as much as possible are holidays in the middle of the week because they just can't use them for anything. They can't take off for work and make a long family, you know, have a long weekend for a family trip. So you have to force that 90th day to fall on a Thursday, and when you do that, your rest of your calendar is basically forced to fall into certain parameters. So again, wanting to present two instructionally sound choices to all employees, that's what we ended up with, Scenario One and Two. If there was more flexibility in when you can start and whether makeup day is being built in, you would have more flexibility. Like I said, we are trying our best to match the other districts, and another comment was teachers really would not like to have that, that 90th, 190th day fall on a Saturday. Again, it all really, once you put that 90th day on the Thursday, all the numbers just fall, and it's very hard to make it work to get that. So you kind of have to, there's a lot of, there's a lot of give and take with the calendar. You could put that, you could get that 190th day on a Friday, but then again, you may end up with that middle, end of the semester break in the middle of the week. Any questions?
Questions or comments from the board? Manning?
At the, the last meeting, I talked about half-days. It looks like there's two half-days in here, is that right?
Right. What's in there right now are the standard half-days, which is high schools always the day before the end of the first semester because it's exams. That is a half-day for high schools. And then the last two days of school are half-days. The other half-days that are built in for elementary and middle days are not, have not in the past been plugged into the calendar until we have an approved calendar and the principals can sit down and plug those in. Those have typically been used for professional development and collaborative planning. We are in the process, Dr. Davis led a discussion at the last Faculty Advisory Council about the value of those collaborative planning days. We are looking at that, getting input from our teachers, our principals, and other, what other districts do, and then we'll come back to the board and share the information about those half-days and what the recommendations are.
And I had somebody, you know, quickly help me figure out that might be a problem, right? Stay within the days that we pay for teachers and... right, to stay within the days that we pay for teachers and whatever, so I know that's an issue, but if there's a way that we can figure out how to minimize that, that would be, that would be helpful. And then the only other thing, do we, are we doing testing now when we come back? I mean, that's always been an issue in, like, when we come back from the winter holidays.
Yeah, one of the big, slip back to our knowns that unfortunately, right now, the biggest unknown that's hanging over our head is statewide testing, because we, and Jeff Potts, I don't know that we even know this year, for this current school year, testing dates, somewhat.
Really?
Close, but for next year, with the changing in the testing, we don't know, but typically they are first of May after the spring break.
I think I was referring to end of course, don't we, sometimes we have end of course before we leave and sometimes it's after we come back, whatever.
I believe after, it's before that, it's the after winter break because of when the end of the semester falls.
So, we are doing it after again.
Right now.
I know it's not ideal, but I know with everything, yeah.
What is it again? We have talked about, you know, trying to have exams before winter breaks, Dr. Hamm met with student leaders, and that was one of their biggest requests. And again, it's get, trying to, typically you would only, you want to get as many days in, so you want to try to get up to the ninety days in and have those, and because we can't start until the third Monday in August, we can't get those. We could look, I think there's some discussions that may be adjusting that and doing that before and then coming back and doing something after winter break, but there's no way to complete the first semester in that first half of the year.
I was just asking, yeah, no, I mean, I think-
But we did, that was discussed.
I think the staff was clear.
Thank you, Ms. Manning, other questions or comments from the board? I certainly hope, I think you suggested that, Libby, that sharing our calendar with Richmond One and Raffon will hopefully help, because I think having a calendar that's more aligned with Richmond One as opposed to Lexington One or Lexington Five probably is going to be a greater benefit or yield to our population, and so I'm glad to hear you say that. The other thing is graduation days in the past have fallen on a school day, and is that worked out or resolved with the calendar, do we know?
For this calendar, we don't know, we set it for the current school year.
Right.
Typically, we meet after this year's graduation in June of 2015, we sit down and meet with the university, with all the other districts that use that, and set the dates then. And it's kind of a, you give your first and second choices and the university lines up as best they can.
And so, certainly we're not giving a choice that conflicts with the school day then, I guess is what I'm asking.
We try not to, but that, this year, we are going to have them on school days, it comes down to who got first choice, who gets their first choice and when that falls.
And we have graduation on two days this year?
Yes, sir, I believe it's, let's see, on Thursday, second and third, June second and third, which is a Tuesday, Wednesday.
And so, for the calendar that you're proposing, we'll have that conversation with the university very, very soon.
Well, it'll be-
After graduation.
After the, yeah, we usually meet that week right after graduation, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from the board? Thank you, very well done.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, agenda items for our December board meeting, Dr. Hamm?
Mr. Chairman, on December the ninth, we will have a student-focused presentation, we'll ask for your approval of the calendar for the 2015-16 school year. We'll have a report from the diversity task force, developing a comprehensive diversity plan is another of our nine priority areas, and that committee will have met, so that is again a progress report. We'll have the comprehensive annual financial report for the year that ended June thirtieth, 2014. An update, again, on the Ridgey facilities, any progress that's been made, that's the monthly update. And then a discussion of policy GBEBC, which has to do with gifts to and solicitations by staff.
Remember, during the month of November, there's only one board meeting, so the next board meeting will not be until December, in case folks are wondering about that. Are there any additional items that the board would like to add to the December board meeting or any future board meeting?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Manning?
I know we mentioned this briefly, but just for future, not necessarily the next board meeting.
Yes, sir.
Look at our schools that maybe fell in their rating, or that had some other issues that need to be addressed, if we can just have a report on what the plan is to resolve those issues and maybe why we saw some of that.
Thank you, sir. Other items requested by the board? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our second public participation, no one signed up for it, however, if there are any members in the audience who'd like to come and address the board, you can feel free to do so at this time. Seeing none, thank you very much. At this time, we'll have our final comments from our board members, and I'll start on the very far right with Dr. Caution Parker.
Glad to be back in Richland Two, thank you.
Ms. Mackey?
Good to be here, serving in a different capacity. I want to commend the reading coaches' presentation, that was awesome, I enjoyed the enthusiasm Miss Gilchrist just called, but I enjoyed their, Ms. Griggs and Miss Gilchrist, your enthusiasm was infectious, I enjoyed your presentation, and from the discipline task force, our two innovates, but particularly the reading coaches' presentation, I just love your energy, and if that's infectious to our students, then hey, two thumbs up, great job.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Manning?
Always appreciate Polo Road being kind of our home school, beautiful school, and love being here. Thank you to the community for giving me another opportunity to continue my service to Richland Two and the parents and families of the district, very happy to return and continue that service, and I also thought we had a lot of great presentations tonight, a lot of information, and it's just really exciting to see how much that we're doing in this district, there's a lot of good things going on here, and I hope we see more of that in the newspapers, the positive things that are happening, so, thank you.
Mrs. Brill?
I too want to echo what James was saying about the reports, they're absolutely excellent, and all the folks that head up these committees really do a very professional job and outstanding work, we appreciate you. Congratulations to the new board members, welcome aboard. If I can answer any questions, call me, email me, text me, glad to help, we're just glad you all are here, and I'm glad James came back. Sitting next to him is very helpful, he's so good with IT. Anyway, I'm excited, this is a new board, a new year, and I'm just really excited about all our promise and all of our potential.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill. Dr. Arthur Johnson?
Yes, great presentations tonight, and also I'd like to welcome all the new board members, I look forward to working with you guys, and I think we have a great team here, so I'm very excited about that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Plank?
Well, this being my first board meeting, my comments will be a theme of gratitude. First, thank you for the speakers tonight, it's neat and this pace of technology to see forward thinking the way it is and the dedication for our reading coaches, and I love the word coach in that part of it. And recycling anything is true, I ended up donating fifty signs to Bookman Elementary, I don't know what they're going to do with it. Apparently, they can be recycled, too. Secondly, thanks again to all our veterans who may be in the room, in the district, in the state, in our country, many of whom have not returned to our homeland, that have given us the opportunity to have this freedom, the ability to have liberty and to have our way of life, especially as it comes to elections, and I want to thank you for the voting public to be on this side instead of that side tonight. Thank you for the many candidates who put their name in the hat to be part of this great district, I think that says a lot when you have twelve candidates. And then finally, it's a pleasure to serve and I'm humbled to be on this board with very capable people, I look forward to this, this school board, I've been calling it my school board team, and that's the way I look at it, there are going to be times where teams can have their squabbles and so forth, but at the end of the day, they're all heading in the same direction, so I'm really excited about that. I just love the vision of, as people relocate or consider the Midlands for their education, that they see Richland Two as the premier district of choice, and I, it's a real neat opportunity to be part of that, so, thank you to all of you, thank you to the executive staff here as well, been so helpful along the way, and thank you to my fellow board members.
Thank you. Dr. Hamm?
I'll start by saying again, congratulations to our board members, our new board members, and you successfully navigated your first meeting, so good for you. I want to say a special thank you to all the veterans, and I think one question that comes up is, you know, why do we have school on Veterans Day? But all you have to do is be in one of our schools and see the way our students interact with and honor our veterans, not only the reaction of our students, but the reaction of the veterans who interact with our students and see the appreciation our children have for them. You would know that it's a good thing that our kids are in school and the veterans are in our schools as well, so, it's a very special way to celebrate Veterans Day, and hats off to the schools that went to the effort, and certainly to the veterans most of all, who served our country so well. Next week is American Education Week, so Richland Two will be joining public school districts across the country and celebrating American education, and I think it is cause to celebrate, we make a big difference in our American democracy, so I'm looking forward to celebrating that with my fellow educators in Richland Two. Congratulations to Richland Northeast, their Model United Nations team has won another award. Now, this is a Southern United States Model UN Conference, and they, their next stop, though, is that national competition that they win year after year after year, so I want us all to wish them well as they move on to that, they've won that top prize twenty-five years in a row, which is just absolutely fabulous. And then a shout-out to Westwood High School, they have tackled the tough issue of human trafficking, and it was one of three schools selected nationwide to launch a program called Globalize Thirteen, which is a program to try to abolish modern-day slavery, and this Monday, the school will hold a special event to showcase the students' work on that issue.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. Richland Northeast winning the UN award is sort of like Spring Valley's junior ROTC, and then Dr. Davis, they won it about nineteen years in a row or more, and so it's impressive in terms of what happens. I certainly want to thank this district for its resiliency, is a word that sort of rings in my spirit about being a resilient district and being a resilient board, and so it has shown even tonight in the tone and tenor of the board, I'm excited for my fellow board members who are, come on board and look forward to working with each of them as we work collectively to serve all twenty-seven thousand students in this great district. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Manning?
Second.
Ms. Brill? Have a good night.